Rehabilitation of the site and this has been done in the past with respect to woodlands whereby, you know, you would remove trees when you're looking at a new pit with the understanding that when that pit was rehabbed, the trees would be put back in place. They've broadened what can be removed here to extend not just to woodlands but other environmental features, including endangered species habitat and fish habitat. County staff do have some concerns in this regard. In some cases, we're seeing larger and larger pit and quarry operations whereby the rehabilitation might not be for 50 years. And we do have some concerns if we're looking at removal of some of these features that they might not be properly rehabilitated to meet those standards, or it might be worthless at the time when it's rehabilitated, especially if we're talking about certain species or habitat. With respect to the provincial policy changes on climate change, there's more verbiage in the document to speak to municipalities preparing for the impacts of a changing climate. Certainly, we're pleased to see more provincial recognition in this regard and guidance that we should be planning in this regard. We would like it maybe to go a step further and go beyond just some of the water or the weather-related impacts as they've defined in the document and also go beyond adaptation to really look at how we can move towards a prevention, if you will, rather than just coping with the changes that we're seeing. They've included more wording in the document to speak to engaging with indigenous peoples. Certainly, we're supportive in principle here. There might be some clarification needed with respect to the duty to consult, which our understanding rests with the Crown. And the other concern that staff have with respect to these provisions is that in some cases, staff and municipalities are very happy to engage with indigenous peoples, but local First Nations or Métis groups don't always have the capacity to be responding to development applications and municipal initiatives that are being put their way for application comments. And so in some cases, they have come back to counties, municipalities, or developers to ask for funding to help them engage in those processes. And certainly, if we're talking about municipal projects, we can build that into our budget if need be. But if we're talking about individual development applications, it can put municipal staff in a difficult position if developer A refuses to pay any monies towards their review of the applications. So we're asking that if the province is going to move in this direction, they consider providing capacity to some of these indigenous peoples to help them better participate in the process because certainly we value their knowledge and traditional knowledge on the planning process in that regard. Perhaps one of the most significant changes to the provincial policy statement is they've put in a section that requires municipalities to identify priority areas for housing or employment where development applications can be fast-tracked. Certainly, as a planner, we would support these changes in principle, but we don't entirely know what they mean. We're not sure when these development applications would be given the fast track, so to speak. Is that at an early stage when they're just coming in for pre-submission consultation? Is that after the application is received and we've done a preliminary review? Or when it gets put on that fast track? Furthermore, we're not sure on how a municipality would determine which applications are eligible for fast track. The provincial document at this stage seeks or specifies that it would be priority applications for housing and employment, which would be probably 95% of the applications that the county is dealing with are either subdivisions or for employment purposes. So how do we choose one over another? And finally, we have some concerns as to the ability of individual municipalities and/or the county to be able to actually fast-track applications. When we get an application now, we don't sit on it. We try to move as fast as possible, and the province has made some recent changes through Bill 108 to further speed up those development processing timeframes, and in some cases, they've been cut almost in half. So we have some concerns that if we're promising a fast-tracked process, could we actually deliver on that? And it does get difficult in a two-tier municipal government system whereby we're coordinating with sometimes report deadlines at the municipal and county level. So while we support the principle of this notion, in practice, without some further clarification, it could be very tough to actually implement. And we certainly don't want to promise developers one thing and then be unable to act on it. They've also provided some changes on the growth horizon that we're allowed to plan for. For a long period of time, it's been 20 years has been the horizon of our official plans when we're looking at employment lands or housing lands or commercial lands. They proposed bumping that up to 25 years, and you can still plan longer for infrastructure needs. County staff are very supportive of this change. We really do believe that planning is best done, you know, longer term and that you continue to evaluate and reevaluate where you're at with certain benchmarks. So that's a very positive change in that regard. They propose some changes to the servicing provisions in the provincial policy statement to say that at the time of an official plan review, municipalities that have unserviced areas in their official plans and particularly unserviced settlement areas, and when I say unserviced, I should say privately serviced, those settlement areas that would be serviced by private wells and individual septic systems. So at the time of official plan review, municipalities are required to assess those settlement areas and determine on whether or not it's feasible to move forward with full municipal servicing in that regard. And certainly, again, in principle, we'd be supportive of that change, but we don't entirely understand what it means. You know, if it means a desktop review to say that the hamlet of X has about 50 houses, is it feasible to put in a water treatment system and a wastewater treatment system? Probably not. We're not looking at extreme growth in that community, then that would be relatively simple to do. But if the province is talking about getting into doing hydrogeological studies and nitrates assessments, then that could add significant onus to municipalities. So maybe there's some further clarification that could be provided by the province here, and we could look at some of those strategic reviews on maybe some of our higher-growth settlement areas that we do reasonably expect to maybe move towards that benchmark of full municipal servicing. They've also proposed some further restrictions on development whereby we have partial services. And for those that might not be familiar, partial services are where there's one municipal service, so maybe you have municipal water in a community, but you still have private septic systems. County staff do have some concerns with some of the restrictions being proposed because in some cases, it would limit new development on partial services to existing lots only. And certainly, where a municipality has invested in, say, a water treatment system, we believe it is fair to allow for limited new growth, limited lot creation, where there's existing capacity within the water treatment system and where there's suitability of the lands to provide for adequate septic systems. The province has also provided a little bit more flexibility on settlement area boundary adjustments. Some of you may be familiar that when we look at a settlement area boundary adjustment, we're looking at a study called a comprehensive review, which is quite often done by the municipality, to look at, you know, where the appropriate directions for growth are, what the demands are for growth, how the lands will be serviced and everything else. The province has included provisions which would allow municipalities to do an even trade, if you will. So let's just say in one part of your settlement area, you are looking at taking out 20 hectares because it would be difficult to grow there or maybe to service that area, and in exchange, you could add in 20 hectares to another part of the settlement area. So as long as you're not increasing the overall growth boundaries beyond what you have currently, you could look at that even trade. The province has also included some provisions in this section which look at how we monitor and market our employment lands. And they've included some rather vague statements about identifying priority lands and making sure they're investment-ready and everything else. And from a staff perspective, we would say, this is what our economic development staff are already doing, and we suspect that's the case for economic development staffs across the province. So we're just not sure what would further be required here and whether or not there would be any changes needed at an official plan or zoning stage. Finally, we've just added some comments about what might be missing from the provincial policy statement, and we really do think there's room for the province to explore some new policies with respect to recreational development. Right now, under the provincial policy statement, you're basically either a settlement area, so whereby you have commercial, residential, industrial, et cetera, or you're a rural and agricultural area whereby you're primarily resource uses. Certainly, there's large parts of the county around the waterfront and in the Beaver Valley and the ski hills that we see as different from either of those. They're not traditional settlement areas in that we're not looking for necessarily institutional or industrial development there, but similarly, they're not our traditional agricultural or rural areas. And it is very tough to fit a planning policy framework into that current PPS in this regard. So we're recommending that the province look at this a little more closely. With respect to the overall impact of the provincial policy statement changes, at this stage, it's very difficult to assess in terms of whether or not there's any resource or financial impacts. There could be further study requirements here needed on behalf of the county or further official plan amendment or further official plan changes, but we'd look to that once the document is actually passed. So at this stage, we're recommending that the committee support the report, that it be distributed to local municipalities within Gray, and that the comments be sent on to the province in advance of their October 21 deadline. And I will just say finally that there are some of your municipal staff that have already brought reports to your municipal council tables, and we've had the benefit of reviewing those comments and discussing some of those comments with municipal staff, so they've been very helpful in helping us pull together this report as well. Thank you.
That's very good. Thank you, Scott. Questions or comments? Counsel decide.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My question revolves around Section 9 of the report. I had sent my questions in earlier to Kim, and I had gotten responses, and I'm still a little unclear on the response for that one question. The question revolves around rural plans of subdivision and whether the new provincial policy statement supports it or not. The answer I got was very ambiguous in the sense that some sections do, some sections don't. My question for you, would it be wise to include in our comments that we are seeking clarity on this? And the reason I ask is that at the recent AMO conference, Gray Highlands did have a delegation with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and we were very vocal about the need for rural plans of subdivisions. And we would like to see the provincial policy statement be more, bring some ease onto that issue.
Thank you for your comments. I apologize that the reply was somewhat ambiguous in that regard. Just for the benefit of the rest of committee, the whole, there are certain sections of the provincial policy statements, particularly the servicing sections, which do appear to give some option to consider rural plans of subdivision whereby you could look at a plan of subdivision outside of a settlement area on private individual services. However, there's a number of other sections of the provincial policy statement which are heavily encouraging municipalities to centralize their growth in both their fully-serviced settlement areas and maybe some of their rural hamlets and villages. And so when read as a whole, county staff are of the opinion that the province is pushing us to look at new residential growth within our settlement areas. And it doesn't have to be fully-serviced settlement areas, but it is within our settlement areas where we have, in some cases, hard and soft services. There is room for limited residential growth in our rural areas, but that's not a fine term. So certainly, your point is well taken if there's the thought that we should be pushing the province for more clarity here. From a staff perspective, we certainly see challenges when we look at things like rural plans of subdivision because they can impact other resource uses in the rural areas, whether they be farm uses or also aggregate uses. But having the province clarify this would probably be beneficial in that regard.
Counsel McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council, and thanks, Scott, for your report. Certainly, just to follow up on that comment from my deputy mayor is certainly, for an example, 2005 provincial policy removed that part of having rural subdivisions allowed. For an example, we had an application, started the process in Feversham, and just going back a little bit in the early 2000s, there was a water system there that got decommissioned because of not enough users on that system, and they started drilling wells, and next thing you know, they all drilled their own wells because that was the change in the costs and stuff, but it's a little bit of a history. Certainly, certainly, as you was talking about, Scott, is built-up areas to eliminate, but sometimes geographical areas have also a bearing because I would say probably in the proximity to where that is in Gray Highlands to Blue Mountains, it might have been built out by now just because of the proximity of where the demand and all that stuff is. Saying that, I think we do have the ability, or I would like to see that comment be forward to get clarity. I know a number of you around the table here were at that round table back in February, I think it was here in One Sound, when Mr. Minister Clark, Municipal Affairs, the minister was there and receiving comments, and he certainly agreed that, and we echoed and reiterated that one size does not fit all to the province of Ontario. Certainly, in areas where you have the ability to tie on to serviced areas, certainly, and I think that goes into that hierarchy of first try to do that, and then you get to the last option. But certainly, in rural Ontario, I mean, and we know for infrastructure, probably is an example of Blue Mountains way back when, there was funding. We don't see that funding the same to build that infrastructure for water and sewer as we have seen in the past. So we know that for growth and for, you know, we need those options and we need those availability to do that type of thing. And certainly, I guess, Scott, to you, if a rural subdivision was proposed, it still has to go through all those studies and stuff, like you said about the nitrates and all that stuff, still has to go through a process to even to determine. I mean, if you're on a karst area, well, it's going to be a different story than if you have, you know, other soil types underneath where you're proposing, and certainly lot size too, right? And that's all goes into that perspective. And lastly, we've seen the technology of septic systems have changed greatly over the last 20 years of the technology. I always say if you can put an 8,000-square-foot house in an island in Muskoka and put a septic system with it, the technology has changed because you've got pretty much sensitivity all around that island as far as the water. So I just use that as an example. So certainly, I'd like to see some clarity. I know certainly I've had a conversation with the Chair of Roma, Al Thompson, about getting clarity, because part of his clarity also was, what about secondary units on ag lands? Because you're not supposed to have development on ag lands, but certain policies allow secondary units secondary to the primary. So he would like to have some clarity too. So we've talked about this too, so I don't know if we have an opportunity to get a meeting. We made that request that we can have a further conversation, and I guess these comments are in by October 21st. Any, I guess it'll be who knows when when it'll come back. And you mentioned about workshops, so I don't, I was uncertain, were these workshops provided by the province for getting input back, or?
Sure. A few things there. First, the workshops were advertised to staff, and originally, we were told we could send one staff person to these workshops, and they held one in London, which our Director of Planning was able to attend. And then they later hosted a series of webinars and said for those that couldn't attend the workshops in person. So the province really went to great lengths here to make sure that people were aware of these changes and getting input, so that was very good. With respect to some of your other comments, certainly points well taken. With respect to the Feversham example, the current county plan would support development in Feversham, and the current PPS would as well with those studies that you noted. It's when you get outside of those rural settlement area boundaries that there's currently challenges, but we could ask the province for some clarity there. With respect to the secondary units on agricultural lands, the new plan that the province approved, Recolor Gray, does support secondary units on both agricultural and rural lands. So if you have a farm, you could look at another apartment either in the house or even in a secondary structure. In some cases, individual municipal plans and zoning bylaws will now need to be updated to also allow for that, but the county plan is very permissive in that regard. So thank you for those comments.
So talk about building on just to trateries or built-up settlement areas, but if somebody wanted to build a brand-new rural subdivision, say, side by it, and it's not in that hamlet area, they'd have to go through an official plan process. So what's your thoughts on that in the current verbiage that's there? So say, there's a piece of property, a rural piece of property that's beside a built-up area, they'd have to go through that process, but does, do you feel that there's enough support in the new provincial policy that would allow that to move forward? Where in 2005, it said no rural subdivisions in the story?
My opinion is that if someone were to propose a new subdivision on the edge of a settlement area, on the outside of a settlement area, the county at this stage, under the current provincial policy statement in 2014, in my read of this new, we'll call it 2019 proposal, would be that either the municipality or the proponent in that regard would be looking at doing a comprehensive review study to look at extending that settlement area. And, you know, those have been successfully done in the past, but it's really trying to get the municipality and the county to focus on where strategically do we want our growth? Where can we provide municipal services, again, whether they be water and sewer services or other such services that both the counties and municipalities need to provide? And the province is looking to see that we're using land efficiently such that we're not making uneconomical choices with respect to expanding those services. So if there was a demand for it in terms of if most of the land had been already consumed in your settlement areas, then it's certainly a possibility to expand. But the province since 2005 has really cracked down, if you will, on those expansions. And, you know, from a pure planning perspective, certainly, we understand the rationale behind that. We agree with you that one size doesn't fit all, certainly, you know, if we're looking at expanding the city of Toronto versus expanding Feversham, they're very different scope studies. But there is, in our opinion, benefit to at least going through that exercise to kind of strategically look at where we want our growth and what type of growth there's a need for. So in my opinion, the new provincial policy statement isn't a lot different than the current 2014 or the 2005 version in that regard because it still does place those, place that emphasis on maintaining our boundaries where possible.
Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Scott, I was, I'm wondering why you didn't have more pushback with the fast-tracking? Every developers, every single developer will want to be fast-tracked, and assuming that you're doing everything as fast as you can now, you would either be hiring more staff to do it faster, or something has to be eliminated in the process. So I guess the question is, what are you prepared to eliminate in the process?
It's certainly a fair comment. Staff felt we needed to toe a certain line in our comments in that regard because, you know, we do see priorities on certain types of development. So if someone came in and was proposing, you know, large amounts of new affordable or rental housing, you know, we would certainly work as fast as we could with our partners to try to ensure that application got processed in expedient fashion. But there's certain things legislatively right now that we simply can't eliminate. The Planning Act provides for certain timeframes in terms of we must give at least 20 days notice of a public meeting and various other things, so we don't see a lot of leeway there. One of the things that we could gently push back to on the province is with respect to, so if municipalities are being asked to fast-track applications, are we going to get fast-tracked approvals or comments back from provincial agencies and provincial ministries as well? Your point is well taken, and at this stage, we're struggling with how we would fast-track an application, but we don't want to be the main holdup between priority development needs such as affordable housing or employment, if we can avoid it in any way.
If I can just add on to Scott's comments too, when we look at changes, fundamental kind of changes like this too, you have to ask yourself, who is really the target for this discussion and whose developments are we trying to fast-track? This is not legislation in my belief that was meant for Gray County. This is city of Toronto with big, complex developments that have a whole lot of stakeholders involved in them. I think until we actually see the regulations and know some specific numbers, it's hard to know whether or not that we'll really see an impact because, as Scott said at the beginning, we don't sit on things here. And I think our numbers are good in comparison to what sometimes people have to go through when you've got a lot more levels of approval, if you will.
Okay, so I'm going to call on Counsel Mackie and then Counsel Mill, and I think we'll, Counsel Desai, you as well? Okay. So Counsel Mackie.
Thank you, Warden. Scott, you, and number two, agriculture and aggregates, can you just talk about what an agricultural systems planning is a little bit more and what that may involve for Gray County, as well as what happens when the two come in conflict with one another? Does the province have more value on agricultural land or on aggregate? Thank you.
With respect to agricultural systems planning, Philly Markowitz from our Economic Development Department has really done a lot of excellent work here. And really, what it's pushing municipalities and counties to do is to consider the entire system. So, you know, 10 years ago, we were likely guilty of just looking at the land. So we looked at the land, and we looked at whether or not it had decent soil on the land for growing things, and if it met a certain benchmark, we would protect that land. But maybe we weren't taking a wholesome approach of looking at the entire system, and the entire system including not just the land, but also the infrastructure, so our roads and bridges, as well as the infrastructure needed to process those agricultural products. So whether it be things like grain elevators or abattoirs or various other things, and the transportation network between both the primary producers and some of those secondary or tertiary processors in that regard. So it's pushing municipalities in their planning, which we support, to look at making decisions that consider all of those factors and not just the capability of the land. So the one thing that we saw when the provincial policy statement was updated last go-round in 2014 was greater flexibility in allowing for on-farm and agricultural-related businesses because the province was starting to look at, you know, what is the system, you know, that gets the food from the ground to our plate, so to speak? And there was a recognition that we needed some additional flexibility in that regard. With respect to the second part of your question, you know, the province has told us in the past that they don't prioritize agricultural over aggregate or vice versa. The provincial policy statement is to be read as a whole. The application of the policies is such that one can apply for a license to extract gravel or bedrock in a prime agricultural area, provided you're willing to look at rehabilitation to substantially the same standard of soil, or if it's below the water table, it becomes a man-made lake. So, you know, there are some members of the public and watchdog groups that have criticized both the province and the county of placing a higher priority on aggregate. The official parental line appears to be that both are important, and we need to consider both when looking at any operation, but I can certainly see where members of the public have come to the conclusion that sometimes it appears that aggregates can trump prime agricultural land.
Thank you, Scott. I'm looking at faces, and so I think people are getting tired. I want to acknowledge Counsel Mill and then Counsel Desai, and then I'd like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And notwithstanding Kim's comments about where this is, or the policy statement is directed to, in terms of speeding it up, Scott made the comment during his report that in a two-tier planning system, it does take more time. So, and maybe the, and maybe this discussion is more relevant to the strategic plan, but perhaps it's time for the county to do all the planning. Just a comment.
Just a little bombshell. Okay. Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm just seeking clarity on the comments that I, or the question that I had with regards to seeking clarity on the rural plans of subdivision. Does that need to be part of the motion, or will staff add that to their comments without that?
Randy?
I think if the motion maybe can identify that, some direction on that, or at least identify that as revised, that report, we can definitely add in and request clarification on that matter. So we can definitely add that into the report prior to us sending it off. So I don't know if we just identify in that motion as that report, PRCW 4119, as revised regarding an overview, or if there's an actual amendment that needs for that. It's more of a clerk, I guess, question.
Are we clear, what we're asking the province for is additional clarity around the rural plans of subdivision. You're asking them to provide further comment to just, to make it more clear because there does appear to be some, you know, a little bit of conflict within the different sections. Okay.
I think that that, somebody's...
I think that that, somebody's gone. That's okay. I think what I'm hearing doesn't really require a separate motion. I think staff can incorporate that into what we have here. Anything else? Really quick.
In response to Counselor Mill, I'd like to say I support the, the motion, his, his suggestion of going to a single-tier planning session, level of planning, but at the local level.
Exactly as I predicted. Okay, so I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That is carried. Okay, we're going to take a break for lunch and come back after lunch.
Call this meeting back to order. We are now dealing with 7F, great land of Town of Blue Mountains. Randy, you're on deck. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Boddy, seconded by Counselor O'Leary. And Randy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I apologize in advance. I'm losing my voice. I've been battling a cold since Sunday, so I will try not to. Yeah, exactly. That's right. So the purpose of this report is to consider a proposed plan of subdivision known as Lower Bay Phase 4, which would create 38 single attached residential units and a future multi-residential block known as Block 39. Subject lands are on the screen there. They're located on Block 1 and part of Block 2 in a registered plan of subdivision in the Town of Blue Mountains. These blocks are part of an overall master plan development known as Lower Bay, and this proposed subdivision would represent that fourth phase of that master plan development. Subject lands are currently vacant, with the majority of the block being covered by trees. Lower Bay is located just west of the town of Thornbury and north of Highway 26 for those not familiar with the area. The lands would gain access via two public roads. The first road would be an extension of West Ridge Drive, and the second road would be a crescent shown as Street A on the proposed plan. Surrounding the subject lands are part of the golf course at Lower Bay, and further north is a previous phase of the overall Lower Bay development known as cottages at Lower Bay. So there's the proposed plan on the screen. You'll see in the top corner, top left-hand corner, is that multi-residential block, and then everything else is proposed as single attached residential units. The proposal would be to develop Block 39, that multi-residential block, via future condominium application and site plan application. The proposed development also requires an amendment to the Town of Blue Mountains zoning by law. The lands are designated as recreational resort area in the county official plan, and recreational resort areas are identified as settlement areas and permits development of this nature. Public meeting was held on January 14, 2009. There's a number of comments that were provided at that public meeting, as well as comments in writing. Some of the comments were ongoing development should be in accordance with a master plan, that road crossings should be discouraged on the Georgian Trail, concerns about construction traffic, and recommending that all construction traffic use side road 39. And there's conditions that require that, so all the construction traffic won't go through the existing subdivisions. It'll come from side road 39. There's concerns about drainage and managing storm water. Those have been reviewed both by the town and Gray Sobel, and based on the proposed conditions, they've identified no further concerns with respected drainage. There is some existing drainage concerns that are going on with previous phases of the development, and those are currently being looked after by the town and developer. We also received comments ensuring that short-term accommodation units are not permitted, concerned about the loss of trees, that a public linkage should be provided through the residential block. They recommend a public meeting for the site plan review, and also ensuring that architectural guidelines are followed, recommending that West Ridge Drive be assumed by the town sooner rather than later, and that the missile road to the third side road should be constructed now. So those will be part of future phases of this Lower Bay development, and that's, once it's upgraded to a town standard, that's when the town would assume those roads. They're also wanting to see additional amenity space, and there is a commitment in the original master development agreement for approximately three and a half additional hectares to be dedicated to the town, and those will be looked at again in future phases. Concerns about the development being compatible, and concerns about the proposed density. This proposal meets both the county official plan and town policies with respect to the density, and concerned about increase in traffic and parking. And mostly, the concerns are with respect to the multi-residential block, and as I mentioned, there's going to be future planning applications in order to how that block gets developed. We have received a number of comments from agencies. Historic Salgam AT has no objection. Canda Post says that they'll be delivering mail via the central community mailbox, and draft plan conditions have been addressed or included to address this matter. Gray Sobel Conservation Authority, they identified some questions early on. Additional information was provided by the applicant. That's been reviewed now by Gray Sobel, and they recommended that conditions be included, including stormwater management plan be required, a detailed one, as well as tree vegetation retention handsome plan. Those have all been incorporated into the recommended conditions of draft approval. MTO has no concerns. In Town of Blue Mountains, they recommended a number of conditions, and those have been included in the conditions of draft approval we're recommending today. So based on that, it's county staff's opinion that the proposed plan has regard for matters under Planning Act. It's consistent with the PPS and conforms to the county official plan and town official plan. As such, we're recommending that the subdivision be draft approved, subject to those recommended conditions of draft approval. If you take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Counselor Mellon.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and not to drag this out, but I was wondering, is the golf course going to stay there? And when you talked about compatibility issues, is there concern about errant golf balls into somebody's backyard? But, you know, we're not all professional golfers.
Excellent question, and we raised that question actually early on in the process, and as a result, they did a study to look at the golf spray analysis. So you and I are both on the same page there in terms of our golf balls maybe don't necessarily find the fairway every time. So through that study and through that analysis, they feel that with the buildings where they're going to be built and set back, that there won't be any issues and concerns with that. There may have to be adjustments made to the actual golf course itself, but they'll look at that in the future. But based on the analysis that's done to date, there won't be any concerns with really errant golf balls.
Okay, Counselor Desai.
There we go. What I'll say is Markdale is a brilliant case study in the example of golf courses and planning, because what we've done...
Sorry?
Probably, but see, the thing is that if you have errant golf balls, they go into the cemetery, so they don't tend to complain.
Thank you for that. Counselor Keveney.
Okay, a serious question, sorry. Through you, Mr. Warden, and to Randy, and I just wanted to discuss the berm along Highway 26. I think it's generally unpopular, and I'm wondering, will this development cause any increased expansion of the berm? And what is the purpose of the berm according to the developer, if I may ask? And is there any requirement or intention by the developer to landscape that berm?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Great questions. We also had some questions with respect to the berm. There are previous approvals that were granted by MTO for this berm. I think what's happened is that originally, when this development was planned, it was planned to be done in a shorter timeframe. Obviously, recession, I think, threw a wrench into, you know, developments of this nature being fully developed. The reaching probably definitely at the midpoint, for sure, of this development. There's Phase 5 and 6 that are still, will be coming forward in the future. The way they're using the berm is basically any material that's from the development is being placed into that berm, so that, so if it's not of construction-grade fill, for example, it's basically going into that berm. And like I said, they received earlier on permissions to construct that berm. I think the town has been looking into whether or not the permissions or the current berm is going beyond what was originally thought of or permitted, and I think they're working with the developer on trying to address some of that. Although there may be some fill material that's from this development that goes into that berm, it's kind of a separate issue at the same time, in that the approvals go through MTO and as well as the town's fill bylaws, my understanding, in terms of trying to address that berm issue. So I think that, like I said, the town and the developer, as well as MTO, I think are going to be working through some of those berm challenges, we'll call them, and so I don't know what the resolution will be in the end, but I know that it's something being looked at and explored further through the town.
Counselor Kepner.
I was going to ask the same question. The thing that strikes me is that they, first, they're putting down tree trunks, many, many tree trunks, and then they're putting earth over that. So the berm will eventually collapse anyway, but it's pretty unsightly, and I'm amazed at the number of comments I get from visitors to the area about what is that?
Yeah, it's, we've noticed that as well in terms of tree material and tree stumps, and I think definitely the town has noticed that, and again, are working with the developer to try to address some of those concerns. I don't think the intent was necessarily to put in brush-type material into those, into that berm. It was intended to more be for fill that couldn't be used as part of the development. So, yeah, I think that's something, again, that the town is working with the developer to try to address some of those issues.
Counselors, whoever.
Yes, I can confirm that the town is working with the developer to address those issues. Unfortunately, the berm got out of control, and part of that is the multi-jurisdictional nature of the berm, in that it was permitted by the MTO, and design criteria were put together by the MTO. When the town first approached the MTO to say, hey, the response was not swift, and so the town is now working with the developer to clean up that berm. It does exceed height in places. Slopes are too steep. There is material in there that shouldn't be in there. It's not a structural feature, so the fact that it may have some subsidence as trees rot is not a huge issue, but there is also, I noticed the other day, some construction material, roofing material in there, and that has been brought to the attention of the MTO and the developer. So there is ongoing work to try to get that result. We've been working on it since the election. Unfortunately, you know, the problem goes back a lot further than that, so...
Counselor Bartnicki.
At this point, I think I will declare, I live in Lower Bay, although I don't have a pecuniary interest because my home there has been sold. I am uncomfortable having any part of this vote, so I will declare on that grounds. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Mackey.
Units are not permitted, concerned about the loss of trees, that a public linkage should be provided through the residential block, they recommend a public meeting for the site plan review, and also ensuring that architectural guidelines are followed, recommending that West Ridge Drive be assumed by the town sooner rather than later, and that the miserable road to the third side road should be constructed now. So those will be part of future phases of this Lower Bay development, and that's, once it's upgraded to a town standard, that's when the town would assume those roads. They're also wanting to see additional amenity space, and there is a commitment in the original master development agreement for approximately three and a half additional hectares to be dedicated to the town, and those will be looked at again in future phases. Concerns about the development being compatible and concerns about the proposed density, this proposal is, meets both the county official plan and town policies with respect to the density, and concerned about increase in traffic and parking. And mostly, the concerns are with respect to the multi-residential block, and as I mentioned, there's going to be future planning applications in order to how that block gets developed. We have received a number of comments from agencies. Historic Salgam ET has no objection. Canada Post says that they'll be delivering mail via the central community mailbox, and draft plan conditions have been addressed, or included to address this matter. Gray Sobal Conservation Authority, they identified some questions early on. Additional information was provided by the applicant, that's been reviewed now by Gray Sobal, and they recommended that conditions be included, including stormwater management plan be required, a detailed one, as well as tree vegetation retention handsome plan. Those have all been incorporated into the recommended conditions of draft approval. MTO has no concerns. In Towne Blue Mountains, they recommended a number of conditions, and those have been included in the conditions of draft approval we're recommending today. So based on that, it's county staff's opinion that the proposed plan has regard for matters under Planning Act, it's consistent with the PPS, and conforms to the county official plan and town official plan. As such, we're recommending that the subdivision be draft approved, subject to those recommended conditions of draft approval. If you take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Counselor Mellon?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and not to drag this out, but I was wondering, is the golf course going to stay there? And is, when you talked about compatibility issues, is there concern about errant golf balls into somebody's backyard? But, you know, we're not all professional golfers.
Excellent question, and we raised that question actually early on in the process, and as a result, they did a study to look at the golf spray analysis. So you and I are both on the same page there in terms of our golf balls maybe don't necessarily find the fairway every time. So through that study and through that analysis, they feel that with the buildings where they're going to be built and set back, that there won't be any issues and concerns with that. There may have to be adjustments made to the actual golf course itself, but they'll look at that in the future, but it's, but based on the analysis that's done to date, there won't be any concerns with really errant golf balls.
Okay, Counselor Desai.
There we go. What I'll say is Markdale is a brilliant case study in the example of golf courses and planning, because what we've done...
Sorry?
O'Leary's Golf down there, too.
Probably, but see, the thing is that if you have errant golf balls, they go into the cemetery, so they don't tend to complain.
Thank you for that. Counselor Keveney.
Okay, a serious question, sorry. Through you, Mr. Warden, and to Randy, and I just wanted to discuss the berm along Highway 26. I think it's generally unpopular, and I'm wondering, will this development caused any increased expansion of the berm? And what is the purpose of the berm according to the developer, if I may ask? And is there any requirement or intention by the developer to landscape that berm?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Great questions. We also had some questions with respect to the berm. There are previous approvals that were granted by MTO for this berm. I think what's happened is that originally, when this development was planned, it was planned to be done in a shorter timeframe. Obviously, recession, I think, threw a wrench into, you know, developments of this nature being fully developed. The reaching probably, definitely at the midpoint, for sure, of this development. There's phase five and six that are still, will be coming forward in the future. The way they're using the berm is basically, any material that's from the development is being placed into that berm. So that, so if it's not of construction-grade fill, for example, it's basically going into that berm. And like I said, they received earlier on permissions to construct that berm. I think the town has been looking into whether or not the permissions, or the current berm is going beyond what was originally thought of or permitted, and I think they're working with the developer on trying to address some of that. Although, there may be some fill material that's from this development that goes into that berm, it's kind of a separate issue at the same time, in that the approvals go through MTO and, as well as the town's fill bylaws, my understanding, in terms of trying to address that berm issue. So I think that, like I said, the town and the developer, as well as MTO, I think are going to be working through some of those berm challenges, we'll call them, and so I don't know what the resolution will be in the end, but it's, I know that it's something being looked at and explored further through the town.
Counselor Kettner?
I was going to ask the same question. The thing that strikes me is that they, first they're putting down tree trunks, many, many tree trunks, and then they're putting earth over that. So the berm will eventually collapse anyway, but it's pretty unsightly, and I'm amazed at the number of comments I get from visitors to the area about what is that?
Yeah, it's, we've noticed that as well in terms of tree material and tree stumps, and I think definitely the town has noticed that, and again, are working with the developer to try to address some of those concerns. I don't think the intent was necessarily to put in brush-type material into those, into that berm. It was intended to more be for fill that couldn't be used as part of the development. So, yeah, I think, I think that's something, again, that the town is working with the developer to try to address some of those issues.
Counselor Suaver?
Yes, I can confirm that the town is working with the developer to address those issues. Unfortunately, the berm got out of control, and part of that is the multi-jurisdictional nature of the berm, in that it was permitted by the MTO, and design criteria were put together by the MTO. When the town first approached the MTO to say, hey, the response was not swift, and so the town is now working with the developer to clean up that berm. It does exceed height in places, slopes are too steep, there is material in there that shouldn't be in there. It's not a structural feature, so the fact that it may have some subsidence as trees rot is not a huge issue, but there is also, I noticed the other day, some construction material, roofing material in there, and that has been brought to the attention of the MTO and the developer. So there are, there is ongoing work to try to get that resolved. We've been working on it since the election. Unfortunately, you know, the problem goes back a lot further than that, so.
Counselor Bartnicki.
At this point, I think I will declare, I live in Lower Bay, although I don't have a pecuniary interest because my home there has been sold. I am uncomfortable having any part of this vote, so I will declare on that grounds. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Mackey?
Thank you. So it's disturbing to hear that construction material is going into a berm. It's not a landfill. So, you know, when does the M and R, Ministry of Environment, get involved to put a stop to that?
I don't have the answers to those questions, other than, as I mentioned, that the town is working with the developer to try to address some of these. I'm assuming that's just, you know, maybe an oversight of a subcontractor dumping material on there that should be going to landfill versus a berm. So that's something, I guess, that, you know, that's the first I've heard of that particular example, but it's something that I think the town and the developer are actively working to try to address, because they've heard loud and clear, both at a public meeting, as well as when we presented this information report to council, there was concerns addressed about the berm. So we've raised those concerns with the developer. They're well aware that there's concerns in the community about the berm, and hopefully, through the town's efforts, they can address and work with the developer to try to address some of those concerns.
I have to admit, I'm starting to get sick just hearing your voice, Randy. No, not sick of your voice, but sick. Counselor Kettner?
Well, it just seems to me, it's surprising that, there's a long history of this, I understand it, but for a long time, apparently, people have been complaining about it, and yet the work goes on progressively with no intention to pay any heed to what the public or what the rate pairs in the area think. So there's an excellent opportunity right here and now to, you know, sort of require some action on it by simply defeating this motion.
I don't have a motion on the floor, so I won't entertain that until such a time as there is a motion to that extent. Randy?
Other than the motion to draft approve this particular development, and as I mentioned, that, as Counselor Suaver indicated, it's a multi-jurisdictional matter, because we're dealing with permit process through the MTO and others. It is linked to the overall Lower Bay development, but it's not specifically tied to this particular phase of the development, if I can say it that way. So my caution or concern there is if this, for example, gets refused or defeated, then, you know, that we're getting into potentially LPAT challenges and appeals, et cetera. So that's the only caution or concern, I just wanted to throw that out there. You know, I think, based on what I've heard through town staff discussions anyways, that the town is actually trying to address this with the developer, and I hope that we'll see some movement there to try to address those concerns that the community has been raising.
Very good. I will now call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much. We will turn our attention back now to item 6A, Resolution from the Township of Southgate on stronger enforcement for the safety of Ontario farm families. I need a mover. Why don't I go with Counselor Kettner? I see him twitching over there, and Counselor Gamble, thanks for volunteering. Okay, Counselor Desai. Oh, my apologies.
Perfect. So this motion from the Township of Southgate deals with the safety of, sorry, safety of Ontario's farm families from animal rights activists, and I think it's an important issue, because we have noticed, and the motion itself mentions this, that these protests are increasingly becoming blatantly illegal in nature with extremist groups trespassing onto private property. As a rural municipality, we need to, we need to take a stand on this, and we do need to support our member municipality in their efforts to protect their farms, and we need to put on a statement that we also stand by our farmers. I'll just go through a few statistics about farming, or animal farming in Gray County. The 2016 Census of Agriculture mentions that Gray County continues to thrive, and it uses the word thrive, despite national trends. Cow calf operations and the number of animals produced decreased nationwide, but Gray County farmers increased beef steer and heifer production. Sheep farms decreased 25% in Gray County, but total production of sheep was up 15%. There was also a 40% jump in beekeeping. I ran a few numbers, and in 2018, OMAFA reported that there was just over 31,000 sheep, about 39,000 pigs, and about 125,000 cattle, bringing the total animal population to 195,427, which, to put into perspective, Gray County's human population was 93,830. If we're not careful, we might run into an animal farm situation. And I'll quote for, oh, come on, that was George Orwell. I felt pretty intelligent, okay?
Where's George Orwell?
Yeah. And I'll, yeah, I'll quote former Warden Al Barfoot. Shortly after the results of the 2016 census came out, he said, agriculture has deep roots in Gray County, and the new Statistics Canada data confirms its importance. As such, I think it's important Gray County takes a stand supporting the motion from the Township of Southgate. What I would like to see in addition to the presented motion is that we also forward this, our endorsement and support of this motion to Ernie Hardeman, who's the Minister of Agriculture in Ontario. Thank you.
I should apologize to the mover and seconder. I was being cheeky by just saying your names, but if you're okay with being the mover and the seconder, we would just add that little amendment to the motion, if you're okay with that. The amendment being that we forward it, not only endorse it, but forward it on. You're good with that? Counselor Kettner?
Yes.
Counselor Gamble? All right, any other comments? Counselor Bartnicki?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I have your book report on the Orwell thing here, and would like to review that with you and your parents later.
On my parents' farm vacation?
Yeah, that's what they all say. I am in support of this motion. We generally at council deal with the protection of mankind, the protection of environment, things like that, but our animals do need that, and there are shrinking resources allocated to animal protections across this province. I think this is a really good message to send. Thank you.
Well, as being a beef farmer and a cow calf guy, I think there's a, and your interest in common here, but two things, certainly biosecurity is one of the main things, too, is for any kind of animal production. And secondly, I wonder if this motion should be forwarded to the Gray County Federation of Ag, along with Christian Farmer Union and National, or Christian, Christian Family, was it Christian?
Farmers Federation.
Farmers Federation and the National Farmers Union, just to show that we are showing support to those organizations within our county, because I know they, those member, farm family members are part of those organizations, so.
Yes, I'd just ask our mover and seconder if they're still okay with that addition. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Moving on to item 6B. I'm looking for a mover, please. Moved by Counselor Desai, seconded by Counselor Carlton. Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I was going through the minutes of the task force, and in the email that I sent to our CAO, I did ask for the terms of reference for this task force, because it seems to me, and for any reasonable person looking at this from the outside, it would seem that the task force should be dealing with high-level issues that the municipality, the Town of Blue Mountains is facing within the county. Going through the minutes, though, it seems that they're getting into the nitty-gritty, and I know, through the minutes, I know that the Warden agrees on this issue. And I, I'm not saying that the Town of Blue Mountains should not be discussing these items. If they are indeed concerned with it, they should. But then, should we be amending the terms of reference so that it does allow for the discussion of these minutia, rather than have a high-level discussion? Because a task force, by definition, at a certain point, their task has to end, or else it's a standing committee. So either we call it a standing committee and amend the terms of reference, or we need to look at how the task force does its business. And that's, that was a concern that I had that I wanted to address, which is why I pulled it out.
Thank you, sir. Kim, anything you want to add to that?
I would, through you, Mr. Warden, agree with Counselor Desai's definition of what a task force is. It's meant to be convened at a point in time to address a particular situation, and then the task force work is done, or something changes. I think from a staff perspective, I have had conversations both with the senior team here, as well as with the staff colleagues from the Town of the Blue Mountains, and we also, at times, have had some hesitation in putting agendas together to know where it was most appropriate to be discussing items. Some of them seemed like they were of a more general interest, and should be coming to county council as a whole, rather than at the task force table. I understand that there are some opportunities coming forward with the Town of the Blue Mountains specifically related to attainable housing, and there was some thought that a future staff report might be able to provide a way forward for the county and the town to address what we understand is a significant problem for everyone with the development of attainable housing. And further to some earlier conversations from Mayor Suaver, Town of the Blue Mountains has come into some, after a lot of hard work, come into some additional assessment this year. We wanted to look at that as staff and see whether or not there was an opportunity to, you know, address their concerns and bring this work to a conclusion for now, and then maybe look at it again in the future. But I think there is a way forward, and with your support, I'd like to continue to work with staff from the Blue Mountains to bring forward a report for your consideration that might allow us to wrap this up.
Any other comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, moving now to item eight, other business? Is there any other business? Counselor Burrow?
Oh, my. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The Committee of Long-Term Care Management met this week. The minutes will be coming to County Council October 24th. I just want to read a statement, that, a motion that was passed at the Committee of Management. The Committee of Management met Tuesday, October 8, and the CAO provided an update on the application process for long-term care home development, which was announced at the beginning of October. The Committee of Management discussed the council direction currently in place regarding application for new long-term care beds. Resolution 2719 from February 2019 directed staff to apply for a minimum of 90 additional long-term care beds. After considering the need for 32-bed resident home area in a new build, the committee passed a resolution recommending that the direction be provided to the staff further to Resolution CW 2719, that an application be made to the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care for 96 long-term care beds. All, the purpose of this was just to bring all of County Council up to date, what the Committee of Management did, so that we can have a good discussion when the minutes come to our County Council October 24th. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Suaver?
Yes, I'd like to bring up something that's, you know, seems to be an ongoing issue, is we, we get presentations, and particularly on Tuesday, we're going into the strategic planning process, so we have the agenda, but we don't have much in the way of supporting materials yet, and we're meeting on Tuesday, and it would be good to get, like, a summary. I know we have the report from last time, which I've gone through, but if there is going to be a presentation by the CAO, it'd be good to have that earlier. And this goes not just specific to that one, but today we had a great presentation from SWIFT, yet we didn't have a chance to review that previous, so maybe, you know, formulate some more specific questions. We, I know at the Town of Blue Mountains, we've established a policy that if your materials aren't in by noon on Friday, you don't get to make your presentation on Monday. So, you know, and I think it's very useful for all council members to have a material a little bit in advance, so that when the presentation is made at a meeting, you know, you're not trying to think up questions on the fly.
Point taken. Do you want to add anything to that? Counselor Bali?
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Some months ago, if not years ago, then, I think Counselor, not Warden, Barfoot, we had a Warden's Farm that was at Walters Falls, and we talked about the county looking at organic waste. My recollection was that there was a motion that came after that here, that I think also came from Warden Barfoot, that looking at the county doing that, and it's a couple years later, and I don't remember a report coming, I'm wondering if it's still on the agenda. I think it should be. We know the province is changing the rules and wants to change it rapidly, and it's coming at us rapidly. We've got two basically biodigestors, one down in Southgate, and certainly the Chatsworth, Georgian Bluffs, one that I think maybe gives us a leg up as this starts coming at us fast, and makes more sense still to me, but we'll have to decide that, that the county lead on this, because it is something, I think, that's going to affect all of us. So I'm just wondering where that report is, or if we can put it back on the agenda somewhere and get it back to us in the coming weeks or months. Thanks.
To be, I had not lost sight of that request. I think two factors at play. One is the continuing evolution of the regulatory environment and not being exactly sure what the sandbox was that we were to be playing in and what we need to meet. The other piece is because this is really outside of any of the current lines of business that the county has, I feel like to do it justice, we probably need to retain some outside expertise to really get down to it and provide you with a solid analysis. So I think that, again, this is probably something that would be well-taken at our discussion on Tuesday, that, you know, we need to move forward with that as well this time.
So I'm hearing that we need some solid analysis on an organic level. Okay, sorry, that's about as funny as I get. Is there anything else for other business? Oh, sorry, Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A couple things. The Town of Blue Mountains is going to be having a joint municipal physician recruitment and retention committee meeting on October 17th, that I've been invited to, but we also have a county committee. I just don't know where, that was picked out a few months back, and I don't know where things are with that, but it's certainly, the Blue Mountains is having one also, and I just wonder what's happening. I got one more thing, Mr. Warden, after that. That'll come back then, I guess, at some time. My other query was tourism. So it was brought to my attention, you know, in Gray County and Gray Highlands, we have the Beaver Valley Road, or the part that goes through Kimberley. But from tourism standpoint, is there a possibility of changing it to the Beaver Valley Scenic Parkway for a tourism type, you know, because I know a lot of people are drawn to our area, and it's, and I just wondered, a process, or is that something that could be taken back to the tourist committee for an idea to talk about? How does that, because it's all about promotion, right? And we know, as you know, right now, going through the Beaver Valley, down toward Kimberley and out toward Meaford, it's spectacular right now with regards to the color and everything that's going on. So from a tourism standpoint, I know sometimes you designate or change roads to sort of have that more, you know, pizzazz to it. So the Beaver Valley Scenic Parkway, and it would also veer off to, down to Heathcote and across that way. So it sort of splits, right? Out to Meaford, where all the apples and butter tarts are, and off to Thornbury and all the great stuff down there, apple cider and stuff. So, anyway, I just wondered if there's something else?
I apologize, Counselor McQueen. We have a road naming policy, to the best of my recollection, so we just need to bring that back with your suggestion and the policy, and just where do we need to go? I haven't looked at it recently, so I'm not too familiar with exactly what the steps are.
Or other, maybe there's other areas within our county. Sometimes, you know, we're drawing people to our county, you know, sometimes that's sort of a reflection of those certain areas. You know, it could be, I would, in New Stat, maybe there's a different road, or, I don't know. Like, you know what I mean? It's sort of self-promoting your area, right? So, anyway, just, so just, how do you, how would you recommend, is that something you can take to the tourism committee for suggestions, or you take it to the transportation, we'll get back? I don't know how.
I want to pull the policy and have a look at what it is that we have the steps that we laid out and see how much flexibility we have and what the steps are, and then we can bring it back. But certainly, having a discussion about the merits of that at the Tourism Advisory Committee, I think, is a great idea.
Counselor Mackey?
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, no, not yet. I'm just, if you don't mind, I just want to make sure we have no other business. And that seems right. Now I'm looking for any notices of motion. Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I had a bit of a brain freeze at the last County Council meeting, and I meant to bring forward a third notice of motion with regards to Ontario Bill 122, which relates to the Highway Traffic Act and making our highway safer for road users. Again, I'll speak to it more at the next council, our next committee of the whole, when we do have the motion on the floor. And thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other notices of motion? Counselor Mackey moves to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Burley. All those in favor? I don't see anyone against. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.